Good evening, everyone. Call this meeting to order. It's October 5th. This is the Elbert County Planning Commission. So what we normally do, we start with a prayer and a pledge. And I think, what time is it? 7:01. So could we please stand?
Our Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the ability to be here. All of us, joining together to do the county's business. We ask your guidance and your blessing upon all of us. We ask for your wisdom to do the right thing and the ears to hear the truth. We ask it in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right, if we could, Jen, please, a roll call.
Well, we have two slightly different lists, and I apologize in advance. So Mike Buck. Danny Wilcox. Jason Vermillion. Roger Burton. Peter Hogan-Dyke. John Surbeck. Dan Haylick. Van Sands. Gotcha, Dan, thank you. And Dwayne Owens. Okay, thank you, Danny.
Seven. Okay, good. So with that, let's get started. Do you have anything, the staff report? Jen, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Sam, please.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. So Christina's on leave. Won't be available for a while, so I will be the active CDS director. I've met with the team. Sent an email out to everybody, or did you all got that? And so, I've done this before. For those of you who don't know, when I first got here, I did it for 10 months until we got a director in place. And I did it with just a contract planning firm. Luckily now, I've got this talented staff that you've been working with for a while and pick it up and run with and everything. But if you guys need anything at my level, please let me know.
Sam, thanks.
Nothing else that I'm aware of, Danny.
Great, thank you. Next item, consent agenda items. I don't believe we have any. Nope? Okay, next part is citizen comments. These are citizen comments unrelated to the applications tonight. So you'll have an opportunity to speak when the applications are presented. All right, so this would be anything? Anything else? Nope, okay, hearing none. No meeting minutes? Public hearing process?
Danny, real quick, did you put or press go on the recorder?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're at 4:31. So it looks like he's doing it.
All right, thanks.
So, at this time, I'm going to start under our public hearing process. I'm going to give you a little overview of what we are. The Planning Commission, we are a volunteer group. We're a quasi judicial group. What that means is essentially, we take the application and we judge that application based on the codes and ordinances that we have. And as we go through, we just compare them right down the line. Okay, we don't have the authority to change anything. We don't have the authority to make rules. Okay, we are truly a volunteer group, looking at the application and comparing it to the codes. The next part, there's three things this group can do. We can approve, we can deny, or we can approve with conditions. Now, when I state approve, all that means is that we're approving, forwarding it to the Board of County Commissioners. Okay? So we aren't actually approving the application. We're suggesting that this, if it's accept, that goes to the Board. Then the Board is the ultimate group that will make the decision. Okay, so when I say approve, deny, or approve with conditions, another part, if we do deny the application, it still goes to the Board. Okay? So if there's another option, approve with conditions, at times, we'll identify things that we need to, that we would like to see, see occur. Okay, ideas, thoughts, related to several items, possibly a safety item, something like that. So we can attach a condition to the application. So that's the part that takes in the conditions into play. Our meetings go like this. At first, our staff will present the application. We'll start right down the list. I think the first one is we've got a rezone five acres RA. So we're looking at different things on that. RZ 0024, that will be the first one. Staff will present it. Okay, they'll present the application. Then we'll request the applicant to step up and give their review. Okay, give additional information. Then we'll go to citizen comments and questions. Okay, at the time, I'll try to get everybody, I'll listen to everybody. We would ask that you keep it to three minutes, if you could. And what we'll do is then after the citizen comments are done, we'll take some notes. And then we'll reference back to the applicant or staff to possibly answer questions that may come up, that may have been presented from all of you. At that time, when that's completed, then the commission up here will ask questions, discuss, and then we'll vote. Okay? So with that, we're in the hearing process. I believe the first one we have on the, on the thing here is RZ 210024, correct? Jen?
That's correct, branded iron. Thank you all for joining us this evening. As Danny mentioned, we're going to hear branded iron rezone, case number RZ 210024, which is a request to rezone approximately five acres from RA1, which is Residential Agriculture 1, to I or Industrial, for the purposes of allowing for an outdoor RV storage facility. Some pertinent data, our landowners are Bailey and Toby Short. The applicant is Bailey Short. She's joining us this evening. The size of the acreage, as I mentioned, 5.01 acres located at 40700 Wind Spirit Lane, Elizabeth. Their pre-application meeting was held on July 30th of 2020. Formal applications middle happened on April 29th of 2021. And our referral process happened from May 5th to June 26th, 2021, with a second referral from July 29th to August 12th, 2021. Their notification for this public hearing was posted in the newspaper on September 9th. Their mailing was postmarked on September 17th, and their sign was posted on property on September 20th. And today is October 5th, and we are at Planning Commission. So the location is property is part of Wind Spirit Ranch, which is adjacent, immediately adjacent to County Road 166 and directly east of DB Speed. So that gives you kind of a good landmark. As you see in the zoning map, we're looking at a lot of agricultural zoning. We have PUDs. And then we actually have a collection of both commercial and industrial properties immediately in that vicinity. There is no floodplain mapped in the area. And our seasonal riverine wetland is the blue line running north to south in that wetlands map on the right-hand side. Yes? Oh, where are you stuck, Dan? Okay. Okay. Oh, I am sharing my screen with Zoom participants. Yep. I'm going to go ahead and restart that. Did you see a change in that, Dan? Okay. Okay. I am, I'm sharing my screen. So Van, are you seeing? Or Peter? Peter, are you seeing what we're seeing here? That's what, yep, that's what I had it set to before. And it looks like even Peter's is not changing in the room. So, okay, for whatever reason, that's not working. I'm going to back out of here and we'll look at the slides without slideshow mode on. Thank you, Dan, for letting me know. So we're going to do a quick glance at the location and existing conditions again, since that wasn't working on the other end. So again, we're immediately south of County Road 166, surrounded primarily by agriculture, some PUDs and some commercial and industrial zoning lots. There is no, excuse me. There's no floodplain mapped in the area. We do have a small amount of riverine wetland that runs north-south through the lot, which will be addressed when it comes to grading plan for the parcel. So looking more specifically at the lot, again, currently zoned RA1, approximately five acres. This is the future plan. Today, we are only considering the rezone. The site development plan, if you've seen that mentioned and what's called out here on this exhibit, will not be addressed until the rezone is approved. If it's not approved, the site development plan cannot go forward. So when we refer, we received the formal application. It was sent to referral agencies per Elbert County regulations. The pertinent comments that we were received were from the Colorado Division of Water Resources, who acknowledged that this rezone is being considered as part of a site development plan application. And there are no water uses planned in the proposed RV facility. They state that any proposed water detention area must meet the requirements as defined in Section 37-92-6028 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Elizabeth Fire Protection District did make comment earlier in the process, or the project, that the width of the fire service access area must be 20 feet unobstructed. Those changes were made and are considered satisfactory. Kim Lee Horn, on behalf of the Elbert County Public Works Department, requested that traffic volumes and reference of service calculations and results in the traffic conformance letter be shown. Those items were provided, and Kim Lee Horn is confident that the traffic will operate acceptably. We did also receive public comment on August 26th of 2020. Gary Levinson, seller and signed as a member of 610 Singing Hills LLC, reached out to staff with concerns about the application not being in appropriate use as the subdivision was planned as single-family home lots, with the possible exception of Lot 1, which is on County Road 166. On June 15th, 2021, Ian Farrell, attorney for Mr. Levinson, reached out to CDS and was put in contact with the county attorney. On June 22nd of 2021, Mr. Farrell contacted the county attorney to express Mr. Levinson's opposition to the application and to supply the protective covenants said to be provided to the shorts by Trivi Commercial Real Estate Development on July 13th of 2020. So as part of that comment, CDS did some additional inquiry and found that on March 7th, 2008, the plat of Wind Spirit Ranch Development was recorded. On July 13th of 2020, a copy of Wind Spirit Covenant was said to have been supplied to the shorts by Trivi Commercial Real Estate. On August 14th of 2020, the warranty deed of sale dated August 7th, 2020, was recorded by the shorts. October 27th of 2020, the Declaration of Protective Covenant Conditions and Restrictions of Wind Spirit Ranch Lots 2, 3, and 4 was recorded by 610 Singing Hills LLC manager Gary Levinson. And on April 29th, 2021, we received the formal rezone application. Article 3C4 of the Elbert County Zoning Regulations lists our review criteria, A through F, for all rezone requests. And those are the six criteria we've looked at in this rezone request. So A, whether the proposed rezoning conforms to and is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. The staff comments that the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan goals for commercial and industrial development, transportation, environment, and economic growth support the rezone application through the following policies. CD2 is commercial development, saying that commercial development should be encouraged where arterial road access, water and sewer services, and suitable topography exist or are included as part of an overall development plan. ID2 is industrial development, says the county should identify employment centers that utilize existing transportation facilities and infrastructure and are located where traffic, noise, and air pollution conflicts with residential, commercial, and agricultural uses can be mitigated. Sorry, conflict. TR1 is transportation, and says new development is encouraged to locate proximate to improved arterial roads or such roads should be provided by the developer. EN1 is general environment. All development, including residential, industrial, commercial, and public utilities, should be designed and constructed in a manner that is respectful to the environment. EN2 is general environment as well, and says new development should minimize negative impacts to adjacent agricultural lands and designated open space. EG6 is for economic growth, and says the county should support the development of agriculture, commerce, industry, education, healthcare, natural resource development, tourism, and residential growth. Criteria B, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses. Staff comments that the immediately surrounding or land uses are commercial, vacant, or undeveloped parcels, and residential of predominantly two-and-a-half to three-acre lots. Rezoning this lot to industrial for the purposes of an outdoor RV storage facility is reasonable due to proximity of commercial development and adjacency of County Road 166. Appropriate screening is also being required for the site development plan to further buffer this sort of use. Criteria C, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provision of public services. Staff finds the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the provision of public services, and there were no objections stating otherwise in the referral period. Criteria D, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment. Staff finds the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the environment, and the proposal will ultimately allow for this lot to be developed as an outdoor RV storage facility with no overlot grading or vertical construction. The historic flow of runoff will also be maintained. Criteria E, whether the proposed rezoning would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system without improvements. Staff finds the proposed rezoning will allow for the lot in question to be developed with an approved site development plan as an outdoor RV storage facility, which Kim Lee Horn, on behalf of Public Works, stated they were confident would operate acceptably with the increased traffic. Criteria F, whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. And staff finds that the proposed rezoning will not be detrimental. So staff finds that in consideration of the criteria set forth in the Elbert County zoning regulations, and as we understand it, that there are no objections from other governing bodies, the recommendation of Community and Development Services is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the requested branded iron, RZ-21-0024 rezone of five acres from RA1 to I on property located at 40700 Wind Spirit Lane, Elizabeth, subject to the following conditions. One, that the applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Two, that the rezone shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the rezone exhibit is recorded. And three, recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within 180 days of Board of County Commissioners' approval. And thank you all for your attention. I'm going to switch this back to our rezone criteria, Danny, unless you would like to look at a different page. No? Okay. Thank you.
The applicant, do we have, who is presenting?
And I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment. So we do have a list going if we're ready for public.
Do you have it? Okay, good. I didn't know if we'd.
I think we have most people on here, and then we can have volunteers and then participants in Zoom as well. So we will start with Vivian Peterson.
If you could, please state your name, where you live. And then you can.
So I am speaking in opposition to the branding zone. I have some pictures of our property that is right next to it. May I bring these up and present them to you?
Yes, if you. Were they sent in the packet? Did you send them to the county? Okay, no, you can bring them here, but we'll get them in the packet.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt real quick and request that any Zoom participants who have background noise, if you could mute yourselves until it's your opportunity to speak. Thank you.
As you can see from the pictures, and I put in the marker that they have there, that is literally against our fence. Our property is a horse property. It is a agriculture, it's a residential property. And it is so close to what they are proposing that if there's a heavy rain, toxic waste or chemicals from those motorhomes will wash onto our property, damaging our property, damaging the water, damaging our animals that are right there, as you can see, against that fence line. This land is so close that there is no fence that you could put up that would protect us from the light pollution that will be coming. I assume they will put lights up to protect the, you know, protect against break-in and that. And that would be, again, in our backyard. There is, there is no fence that you could put up that would protect us from the noise that's going to be caused, from the traffic that's going to be caused, from the pollutions that will be there, because it is so close to residential. Legally, you can't have industrial next to a residential that close. There has to be setback, there has to be buffers. If the motorhome should catch on fire, which they do, we have motorhome, we know what it, you have propane, you have gas. If they catch on fire, it would very easily spread to our property, or they'd be having to damage our property to get through the fence, to get to where the fire is at, to help it put it out. It will bring crime into this area that is a residential area. They'll be coming up on our property to get to that area. So again, it's bringing crime into the area. This, motorhomes encourage rodents. Unless you're going to have a lot of barn cats all over, we will have increased amount of rodents, their disease and their destruction coming into our property and the neighborhood. There's going to be decrease in our property value, having this next door to us, rather than residential, which is what it's supposed to be. And that's what it's zoned for. I don't think that Elbert County is prepared to deal with the liability that would come with this if they were to approve this kind of change into a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Like to invite Art Evans.
And if you could, Art. Good evening. My name.
If you could.
I'm sorry?
If you could, Art, state your name and where you live, please.
My name is Art Evans. I live at 40820 Madrid Drive. My wife and I are homeowners, very close to that property. The rezone criteria lists half a dozen things that you folks look at. I'm going to challenge them. A, that it's part of the comprehensive plan? This property is specifically excluded from the Economic Development Zone throughout that corridor. the economic development zone throughout that corridor. The staff comment says that the area is commercial, vacum, undeveloped parcels, and residential. What we have to the east of that is these two and a half to three acre residential lots, all occupied. The vacant undeveloped land is land that was planted at the same time, sold at approximately the same time, and just hasn't had the chance to be developed yet. It is currently residential, zoned residential. There is one commercial property to the east of it, and it's bordered by another piece of property that is potentially going to be commercial, where the fellow states is going to build a house, and like a model home. The proposed zoning would impact the public services. I can't challenge that at the moment, I just don't know enough about it. For D, it says it won't adversely affect the environment. The people that are requesting this rezoning also have another lot, storage lot in Sedalia. It's about the same size, they have 180 vehicles, roughly 180 vehicles stored there. You got 180 vehicles, there's the easily imagined possibility, gasoline, fuel, raw storage being dumped, there's a fair to middle in chance of hazmat being deposited in this land and seeping into our property. The proposal wouldn't affect the traffic. If you can imagine, their other property has 180 vehicle density, this is going to be about the same. If you take 25% of them, send them out on a Friday afternoon before Memorial Day, headed up, that would be 90 vehicles pulling out into traffic, headed up to the mountains, it's a left turn there, right into Friday evening traffic, trying to get a big vehicle out that you're towing, inexperienced drivers, great potential for damage.
Art, you've got about 15 seconds left.
Pardon?
You've got about 15 seconds left.
That the zoning won't affect us, it's going to affect our property values, and I believe that you gentlemen are going to have to take into consideration the person's rights to their property, they have rights to that property. I believe that my right to maintain the value of my property is senior to what these folks would have, since they came in knowing that this is residential property. If they put a lot, a storage lot in there, it's going to hurt my property values, it's going to hurt my quality of life there. And I urge you gentlemen to reject this application. Thank you.
Next, we have Sue Dilts.
Hi, I'm Sue Dilts. I live at four zero eight eight zero Madrid Drive, in the Pine Lane Estates there, that is up against these properties, totally against the rezoning of the four residential lots in Wind Spirit. And we know we're just talking about property four zero seven zero zero that Ms. Bailey is presenting. Today, we live in a low-density neighborhood, we've lived there 27 years, and the character of the neighborhood represents the reason why we moved into this area. It's the pride that we have living there, and it is completely disturbing to learn that our neighborhood, which is quiet, there's kids, there's, you know, we all live there, and that's where we go home, and now we're being forced to deal with an issue that is going to put some type of industrial RV park next to us. Hundred percent against the rezoning, as it's inconsistent with the surrounding uses. Industrial, commercial doesn't lend to our quiet neighborhood, it's definitely going to increase the traffic, like Art was saying. I mean, just imagine the weekends, people trying to get out of there. I live on Madrid, and trying to pull out to take my kids to school when pre-pandemic, you sit there 10, 15 minutes in the morning, and if you're lucky, you can pull out between cars, because they are doing the 20 mile per hour speed limit because of the school zone. It's crazy. And then now we're going to think about adding a storage lot that's going to put 200-plus different RVs there, where people are going to be coming and going. It's going to lend to more traffic, the safety issues, noise, light pollution, and definitely a reduction in our property values. And not to mention the 17 miles it takes to drive from there to here. Tonight, we counted eight RV storage lots already in Elbert County, and we don't need another one. The other thing I want to bring up, and I know I only got three minutes, so I'm trying to be fast. You applied for, Ms. Bailey applied for the rezone April 29th, but on May 26th, on a Zoom meeting for Liscock Custom Homes, I specifically asked that question. I said, rumor has it in our little neighborhood that another lot is being considered for RV storage. And Jen actually said, while Ms. Bailey's on the phone, would you like to comment? You stated, no, nothing at all. You were going to, you bought the property to put a house on it, which is not true. And I, I don't know, I understand you're in real estate, so my question is, why would we be told about a real estate transaction and have someone be so dishonest, and then we're going to let them come into our community and build a business? I mean, that's totally dishonest and deceptive, and I don't appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Randolph Adrian. I live at six seven five Madrid Court. I've lived in that area for 28 years, you know, we're all kind of long-term people there. And our area is seeing what I think is kind of an unfair amount of this type of zoning, you know, that if you are driving in that area, you'll see that, you know, we got the store, which that originally wasn't supposed to be there, you know, and then, you know, we've, there are just several things, so we just don't need to add to that. But I guess I really want to say I strongly oppose to it. I think that with Elbert County, I don't understand why they allow people to buy a lot that is zoned residential, and they know they have full intentions to turn around and make it commercial or industrial in this case. And we know what the values are. I mean, if you look at the first lot up against the Singing Hills, that's somewhere in a neighborhood of 700,000, 600 and something. This next one back is like half that price. So we know that they're buying it to flip it, you know, and we're starting with industrial, then what are we going to end up with? So again, I just want to say that I strongly oppose it, and, you know, I just respectfully ask you to deny the application, and please send a message to stop this, or you're going to drag us all through this for every one of these lives. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gary Lambert. I live at four zero six zero five Madrid Drive. We've been there for about 28 and a half years. I have, I oppose this. My opposition is based on two things. One, when Mr. Levinson was subdividing his property, we had several communications with the county, and at that time, the county told us, the people of Parkline Estates, that the only lot that would ever be anything other than residential was Lot Number One. So are we going to live up to what the government told us or not? Second thing, my second point is that this actually goes against the economic growth criteria that you gentlemen are supposed to consider. Market studies have clearly shown that when you put commercial property in a corridor, you keep the businesses that bring money to your county away. When I was in college, I did a study with grocery stores, with restaurants, with all the kinds of businesses that you want to bring to Elbert County, because it brings people into your county, and it keeps people in your county. That study showed that businesses will not invest their money when they, when they have to have their customers drive through a commercial corridor, that is what Singing Hills is starting to look like. It's starting to look like that commercial corridor down there by Sedalia. It's starting to look like the commercial corridor up there by Commerce City, and people will not invest in the kind of businesses that you want to bring to Elbert County for real economic growth, because let's be honest, this is not economic growth. They will not invest the money, and there are many market studies that show that. Thank you.
I believe it's Ann Vinstra.
Hi, I'm Ann Vinstra. I live at four oh five seven five Madrid Drive. I too strongly oppose this rezoning application. My husband and I have lived in Parkline Estates for well over 30 years. Our neighborhood is well-kept and quiet. We've seen tremendous growth in Elbert County over the many years we've lived there, and some of it's wonderful, and some of it's very lacking. The Sinclair Gas Station and DB Speed are lacking. These businesses look like the industrial businesses seen in Commerce City. It's very disheartening. And now there's a request to rezone a residential lot to industrial, so that hundreds of RVs and boats can be parked in close proximity, not only to DB Speed, but in our backyard. This will create a very negative impression of our county for anyone driving along Singing Hills. There's already a zoned commercial property being planned for the first lot on Singing Hills Drive, or Singing Hills Road. Based on what we've seen from DB Speed and from the gas station, I'm concerned about the lack of oversight to ensure that these businesses are congruent with the neighborhood. Raven Industries, previously known as Colorado Lining, is also located in Singing Hills, and they should be held as an example of how commercial development could happen in Elbert County. They've done a wonderful job integrating business into the neighborhood aesthetic. While building a gravel parking lot for RVs may look good to the new landowner, I do not understand how having an ice ore will be beneficial to Elbert County. There is no increased employment in this industrial rezoning application. It's a come one, come all, 24/7, have a gate code, and in you go, and out you go, and the dust flies, and the lights are on. When people drive to Elbert County via Singing Hills, they immediately have a negative impression. They see the rundown gas station on the left, and they see the huge metal buildings with cars parked everywhere on the right. It appears that planning for commercial development is anything but planned. There is an existing RV storage lot on Road 13 in Singing Hills, another planned just a mile from Parkline Estates in Goose Creek, and now another. Approving this venture will make Singing Hills Road look like an industrial dumping ground with no thought of the residents who live here, or those who may wish to build in the future. I do not want to see our county become the industrial armpit of Douglas County. I'm not opposed to growth. It is inevitable, and it is important. However, plopping another RV storage lot on Singing Hills makes no sense, and reflects a lack of planning and vision for the county. It's detrimental to Parkline Estates, and it's detrimental to Elbert County.
Ann, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
I'll wrap, one more paragraph.
Sure.
There's a sign on Singing Hills that says, "Elbert County respects the right to farm." I wonder if that vision is still real today. Please deny this rezoning request and respect the rights of Elbert County citizens who would like to preserve our rural lifestyle and our neighborhood for future generations. Thank you.
I'm Gary Levinson. I live at four zero five five zero Wind Spirit Lane. I've written out my statement so that I can succinctly express my concerns. I subdivided 20 of my 60 acres 14 years ago into five acre lots called Wind Spirit Ranch, this lot two being one of them. My wife and I live in Mexico, actually during the wintertime, but I flew back specifically for this meeting. Before continuing, I want to say that I do appreciate your positions, I appreciate your service. It can't be easy, the very nature of your job is you're going to tick off some people and you're going to make other people happy. So I don't envy that in the least. I moved into Elbert County, escaping from Aurora more than 35 years ago, before the roads were paved, Singing Hills, 13, and when each car you pass gave the wave. Some of you may remember that. I'm not sure when that traffic increased to a point where that nicety ended. Elbert County, though, has grown and changed from distant time, still has a rural attitude. I even enjoy going, which I did last week, to the DMV. I don't think anybody in the five metro counties can say that. The sign, which was referred to just by Ann, talking about coming into Elbert County, "Elbert County respects the right to farm," haven't seen that in going into any other county, ever. I accept that Elbert County is going to grow, there will continue to be many changes with that growth. By subdividing, I have added in a very small way to that growth. I took very seriously my responsibility to my neighbors and future residents not to destroy the lifestyle that we all moved here to enjoy. That's why I put covenants on the back three Wind Spirit lots, which includes Lot Two, the Shorts lot, to be only residences, which allow horses, chickens, 4H projects, et cetera, the things we enjoyed upon coming here. In fact, adjudicated water on that lot only allows for water for residents, four horses, and 1,000 square feet of lawn. I would never have sold to the Shorts at any price if I, if they had been honest with me as to their intentions, which became apparent not more than a week or two, I think, after they closed, when they started meetings with the county about rezoning. As for Lot One, although I rezoned it residential 14 years ago, I sold it knowing that it would become commercial, since for decades, decades, Elbert County has talked about Singing Hills being a commercial zone across there. So I did sell it with that understanding, but I was received an offer on that, and I said, I'm going to reduce that offer by $10,000, and I want you to put that towards burns, fencing, trees, whatever it is. So I paid $10,000 towards there, what will come before you at some point.
Gary, I'm going to ask you to wrap up too, if you could.
Okay. Next, with three minutes, I'll see two of my minutes, Mr. Gary Levinson. Thank you. I'm Mr. Lord.
Okay, thank you.
I've also hired an attorney who's here tonight to stop this rezoning, and I'll pay whatever's necessary, and I'll take this to any extent necessary to stop it. I even offered to buy back the lot from the Shorts at the price that they paid, I'll absorb all of my costs of commissions, whatever else. I expect to live out my life here, and will not be responsible for leaving this earth and benefiting financially to the detriment of my neighbors. I'm sure you will hear many promises by the Shorts on how their development will be the Taj Mahal of all RV storage, maybe even required conditions that the county wants. The problem is that Elbert County may not have the manpower to focus and make developments live up to their promises. Singing Hills is a gateway to the county. As was mentioned in the past, it shouldn't become like Commerce City. It should be things like the Coggins Brothers, incredible development, Raven, which was Colorado Lining. I disagree with a few people as far as DB Speed, I think it's a good facility, potentially, he just has to do about 5% more to make that come out, and add the street appeal that's necessary. Future development along Singing Hills is just starting. You'll have many opportunities to review the plans to serve the residents. I'll let others address the potential problems of fire, lighting, traffic, I don't know, any traffic study that was talked about, they've never tried to get on this to Singing Hills off of. this to Singing Hills off of, at many times of the day. Potential sewage, just an ugly blight of RV storage. There's a lot of land in Elbert County that is undeveloped and ideal for their desired use, not here. I should note that Wind Spirit Ranch was not even included, as has been mentioned, in the recently adopted Economic Development Zone. It was specifically excluded. The Shorts Lot should have been, should be in an area where they are not infringing and imposing themselves on a neighborhood, certainly not a neighborhood that's been here more than thirty years. People you heard talking have been here twenty-five years and more so far. I don't relish stepping on someone's dream, except it's necessary when they are stepping on the entire community. I hope you see fit to stop this tonight with a resounding defeat. My offer to buy back Lot Two still stands. It's a perfect residence for a family and just what it's meant to be, and those people will come to love Elbert County also.
I'm Wayne Ordakowski, 910 Newman Drive, Parkline Estates. I got a minute. There's a set of covenants here that are very restrictive, and for business, the Declaration of the Protective Covenant, conditions and restrictions of Wind Spirit Ranch were part of the title closure, Schedule B Part Two. So the buyer can't say that they didn't know they existed. They were here. They were sent with the buyer, with the seller, to the buyer at closing, and that's a Realtor that knows they got them. Also, you have the email from the lawyer, who's not going to lie, and Trevee, who's not going to lie, that it was sent to them well before closing. It was, the said declaration was provided to the Shorts on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty, before the closing. They knew it, everybody knew it. We're trying to be end around here. I just don't understand how this even got to the planning commission level when there's a set of CCR that's in place, enforced, and I don't, I don't even know how we're trying to bypass the CCRs that are very, very simple, and I have it outlined here when I can find it. I might need ten more seconds. Will you give me ten seconds? Okay, so you have them there. But, God, anyway, for business, for businesses, it excludes their use. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Now I plan to substantiate that. Hi, my name is Ian Farrell. I'm Gary Levinson's attorney, and I was retained by him this summer to try to resolve this issue. And first off, would it be appropriate for me to give you the Declaration of CCRs right now? You have it?
You can.
I can? Here, I also have a demand.
We need to put them in the packet, so.
They are.
Come on up, bring them up. You know, they're in the packet, yeah.
Well, okay, so let's, you know, all right. So it's clear that the applicant's attempt to rezone is subsequently developed. Lot Two as non-residential property violates Colorado law as a breach of the express terms contained in the Wind Spirit Ranch's Declaration of Protective Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, which are all called the CCRs. Any such non-residential development will be in violation of the CCRs. It will amount to a clear violation of Colorado law, and it will create a circumstance subjecting applicant to implementation of an injunction and legal cause of action for damages. So applicant must abide by the provisions contained within the CCRs, specifically the CCR states Wind Spirit Ranch shall be developed and maintained as a residential area and, quote, "All subdivision lots shall be residential tracks, RA1 tracks per zoning regulations as written in Elbert County, written by Elbert County." The CCR specifically set forth that no commercial businesses may be conducted or permitted in the Wind Spirit Ranch with the exception of home occupation. It states that no improvements nor any noxious activities shall be permitted on any residential lot which is or might become a nuisance to joining residential tracks, which certainly could be argued as a nuisance. And while outside storage of only one currently licensed and operational recreational vehicle shall be allowed, enclosed facilities shall be provided for any other machinery or recreational vehicles parked or stored on the premises for any period exceeding thirty days. Violation of, violating these or other similar terms contained in the CCR is prohibited under law and will cause cognizable and compensable harm to the Wind Spirit Ranch and lot-only members. So, okay, I don't need to keep reading these. But so there's an environmental control committee that's also established in the CCRs, and it has the right to prosecute any action enforced provisions of all covenants by injunctive relief on behalf of itself or all, or part of Wind Spirit Ranch landowners. So even if you change, you know, change this zoning, there's going to be a legal cause of action that can be, you know, brought to court, and, you know, that would create, you know, unavoidable inconvenience. And applicant explicitly received notice of the CCRs on July thirteenth, and even if applicant did not specifically review the CCRs express terms, applicant was afforded the opportunity to review terms, and this certainly amounts to having at least constructive notice of the CCRs terms. And under Colorado law, constructive notice constitutes sufficient notice under relevant Colorado law.
Ian, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
All right, so there's one Colorado case that says, "The mission of restrictive covenant is contemplated by a general plan of development of a subdivision through inheritance or otherwise in a conveyance of one of the lots by the subdivider does not prevent enforcement of the restrictions against immediate grantee of such lot or his successors entitled if either took with constructive or actual notice of restrictions." So to summarize, applicant was provided these CCRs. It explicitly does not allow this type of rezoning. And, you know, my client, as he stated, you know, he wanted to have sold this land, knowing that it would be rezoned this way, and, you know, I think this is, amounts to an express breach of these terms, and, you know, if we go forward with the rezoning, it's going to cause, you know, unavoidable legal.
We understand.
Consequence. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Rebecca Zambrano?
Hi, everyone. My name's Rebecca Zambrano, and we purchased Lot Three from Mr. Gary Levinson about three weeks ago. When my husband and I met with the Realtor at the land before we put the contract, she did tell us the plan for the development and what the plans were for Lot One, Two, Three, and Four. I initially was interested, or my husband and I were interested in Lot Four. That one was under contract. When Bobby, the Realtor representing Mr. Levinson, did mention that Lot Two was a young couple that had introduced themselves, that they wanted to build their dream home there. It matched what my husband and I were looking for. We just sold the property on 41102 Crockett Tree Ranch Circle. Many of you probably have seen it. It's the white house on the corner of Delbert and Singing Hills, and our plan was to sell the house and build another house similar, a little smaller, to the one we had built on Singing Hills. The plan for the development that Mr. Gary sold us was perfectly what we were looking for. I am finding myself at a seven o'clock meeting on a Tuesday night, when I should be at soccer practice, defending myself opposing, totally opposing to this lady's plan. I do not want an RV storage, not only for the list that a lot of the neighbors have mentioned, but it goes against our family values and what we had planned for that development, and this has tremendously affected me emotionally because I didn't plan to be here. I didn't plan to be defending a lot that I was planning on building a home, nor was I planning to be affected financially by a lot that I had to hire an attorney as well to review the covenants that me and my husband purchased. We have lived in the area for eight years. We previously lived on Thunder Hill before we sold the home and built the one on Crockett Tree. So tonight, if, for any matter, if anything matters for this meeting, I totally oppose to the plan for rezoning an RV storage. Thank you.
Is this Ron Brill?
My name is Ron. I own Lot Four, Wind Spirit. Rebecca didn't mention that her lot is directly adjacent to the lot in question. As a homeowner, I'm in process of building a house there. I have a family with a small child, and our intention is to live there as a family on a residential lot. I went into it, I read the CCRs before we even made a lot, offer on the lot, and I went into it knowing that the first lot off Singing Hills was going to be commercial. And the lots are large enough to give us all enough space so that that one commercial lot wouldn't really affect our residential lifestyle. But an industrial lot directly across the cul-de-sac from my property will have a very detrimental effect on our life. Excuse me, not used to speaking more than two or three people at a time. An industrial property is one thing. A big commercial concrete tilt-up building with traffic that goes there nine to five is one thing, but a RV storage lot is an environmental hazard. It's an eyesore. It's not consistent with the CCRs that we all looked at before we bought the property, and these guys who've been living there for twenty-five years, I know they didn't expect to see an RV lot pop up next to their houses. That's it. Thanks.
That's everybody we have on our list right now, but I do see a hand raised on Zoom. Corey Springer, can you hear?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so my name's Corey Springer. I live at 40715 Madrid Drive, and I am strongly opposed to this for several reasons. To kind of piggyback on Vivian's point, is fire concern for me as a career firefighter? Annually, I run on RV fires, and it's not just one unit that's on fire. It becomes two, three, and four because they're passing their life sergeants. Not only does it go from camper to camper to camper, then it starts fences, it starts grass, and because our subdivision is on the east side from that unit, I can guarantee you that our fences, our grass, our buildings, our horses will be in trouble. And I really would like to know how you would expect to let this fire out with a fire department whose resources are so limited. I've worked in the city, and we still have this issue, and we have several people on scene in less than ten minutes. We have five, six, seven rigs, and we have hydrants. I don't see how this could be prevented in any way, and the closest fire hydrant that you have is at the elementary school. So in order to access those fire hydrants, you would have to run a whole line from there across Singing Hills and shut down Singing Hills track. I don't know how long it would take to get the sheriff's officer there to rent cars and run over that. I don't know how many lines you would have to divert traffic. You can't divert traffic around that area. That's just not possible. And then on top of that, I moved to Elbert County because we lived across the street from an industrial area. They had a concrete factory, and it was detrimental to my wife's health. I moved back to Elbert County so I could see stars, so I could get her healthy, so that I can have kids, and if this goes in, not only RV storage, but fire hydrants down the road, who knows what could be there if it's industrial? And if that ends up being a problem for my wife and we have to move because of your decisions, I'm at a loss for words. So I really strongly hope that you hear, everybody here tonight, that is opposed to this, because I am not the one person that is in favor of this. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Seth Byerly?
Hi, good evening. This is Ashley Byerly. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Hi, thank you, Ashley Byerly. My address is 21311 White Ash Court, Parker, and I'm here on behalf of my mother Connie Prining, whose address is Sixth Lady Madrid Court, and that is my childhood home. We're here tonight to request that the commission deny this rezoning application because it has not been shown that the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and will not adversely impact the environment, including wetlands. How will the impact from this rezoning be mitigated? A screening wall is not adequate for environmental impacts. What water quality is proposed, for example? What mitigation is proposed? What about land use buffering transitions? These questions have not adequately been answered tonight. It's my opinion that staff's recommendation has not been technically justified, and it's for those reasons we ask that you deny this request. Thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak up? If you, if so, go ahead and unmute yourself or raise your hand. Okay, we're going to call Zoom all clear. Is there anyone else in the room?
It's in here.
We're not going to do repeats.
You already spoke.
Yeah. Come on up.
Oh, was it in the packet, sorry? Yeah, that wasn't in. You can bring it up here. We should submit this to the county.
I got timed out before I can hand that off to you.
Okay, all right.
Thirty-three names on there are people that will be severely impacted.
So what we'll do, we'll lay it back in the packet. We're not going to go through those tonight, so. Yes.
I'm going to ask you all to maybe take that back from the planning commission. You can do that after.
Get the rest of the signatures and then submit it to the county. Okay, just add it to the county. If you get a signature here, then give it to Jen over there so we can put it in the packet, okay? But get your signature.
Yeah, if you could, if you can send that in via email, when it, yeah, when it's all filled out with as many as you'd like, go ahead and scan it in and send it to me via email.
If you could, that would work better.
Okay.
The reason is we need to get it into the packet. If you hand it off up here, it really isn't appropriate. We need to get it into the packet so we can all see it, so the commissioners can see it, who will ultimately vote on it, okay? So that's what. Oh, no, you're, you're fine, Art. That's fine.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Go ahead.
My name is Brenda Deitch. I live at 885 Newman Drive in Elizabeth. My husband and I just moved into Parkline Estates in January of two thousand and twenty. It's a beautiful neighborhood. We love the peace and quiet. We love our neighbors. We love our neighbors. We just love our neighborhood. I'm opposed to this industrial development going on. I do title insurance for a living, and I've seen what goes on in Douglas County, and I'm seeing what's happening. and I'm seeing what's happening in Albert County. And I really hope Albert County does not become as irresponsible as Douglas County has become with their development. We need to be thinking about what we're doing. There's plenty of industrial land for them to go and put this RV lot on. They knew this was residential. They didn't need to buy it and then try to rezone it and lie to Mr. Levinson about what they were doing. That's just uncalled for. It's not fair to anybody. So I ask that you consider not approving this rezoning for all of us. Thank you.
Yes, and I have neighbors in L.A. Danny's seen me before.
Hey, we're going to make this last call for comment. If there's anyone on Zoom who'd like to unmute themselves. Still none. Danny, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, so got a number of things that need answer. And I go through the list. One, first have to clear up the issue with the covenants. Okay, and let me, let me finish going through. We've got the covenants. We've got kind of the makeup of the park, the ground cover, the septic tank, the drainage areas. You talked the noise and the traffic, approximate traffic counts. Lighting, what kind of lights will be used? That is something I did, kind of that came up. Fencing, good point. That's here. Yes, yeah, I'm very familiar with where it is. I think that, that kind of covers it, but I mean, primarily, you got to deal with the covenants issue. That we need to hear.
Okay, so according to my covenants, well, actually, there was no covenants when we purchased the lot. I have actually the title commitment that we received when we purchased the lot. It had no protective covenants in it. I actually have a copy of that. It was received on 7/11 of 2020. They're saying that we received some sort of documentation on 7/13 stating covenants. We never received those. It was not in our closing packet. I will state at that time, I was not a real estate agent. I was living in Texas. I was not a licensed real estate agent. I had a Realtor here that was representing us. She went through the packet. We did not find any covenants. Obviously, when you're doing closing docs, those covenants are pretty obvious. You do have to sign those. So I did not receive those. As well as, if you can see, these covenants were recorded on 10/27 of 2020. That was months, two, two months after we purchased the lot. Therefore, they did not apply to us. So they, they are, they are not even affecting us because they were not in place at the time that we purchased that lot. We had no idea the covenants were even being put in place when we purchased the lot. We also purchased the lot under the impression, the reason we purchased that lot is because DB Speed was there. When we were looking at the brochures for those lots, the Lot One in front of us, directly adjacent to us, was listed for a much higher price as commercial. So we looked at it as an investment property. We never had a conversation about what we planned to do with that lot. At one point, we had discussed, my husband and I had discussed to put a shop house on there, and we decided to not. We still wanted to do a shop house with parking on it, RV storage. We decided against that, that it would be more economical and easier for us to be able to rezone the entire lot and use it as strictly RV storage. Now, this is dry storage. It is, there is no dump tank. There is no water supply to the people that will be storing their RVs. There will be no living in them. We will have things in place in order to weed out those ugly campers. If it's older than 10 years, it has to be reviewed by us and subject to review and approval before it will come on the lot. As far as ground cover, it will be completely, it will be recycled asphalt. We will also have a detention pond to deal with water runoff and wetlands. It will be done per a drainage study that we have had done to show us how the water needs to flow and exactly what will be done, and the grading will be done as such. As far as traffic, our traffic study shows that it will not have a extreme impact to traffic. It, I believe, if I remember correctly, it said it would only maybe add four trips per day to that road. It would not impact it. That's according to our traffic study.
And you got a traffic study through?
We have had a traffic study done, and it has been submitted to the county along with our drainage, drainage study. Dave Rubel.
The study was done from them, it was received by Kim Lee Horn.
Good, okay.
Yes, and they were the ones that responded.
It was done by DB Enterprises LLC.
Yes. And then lighting, we have gone through Sun Valley Electric. They have set up a entire setup and structured for us as far as lighting. They will be LED lights. They will only shine where they are supposed to. They will not leave the property line. They will be, they're 240 watts. And it, I specifically told them that the layout had to be to where it would not extend past our property lines in order to accommodate the neighbors, to not bother them. We will also have 24-hour surveillance. They have also included that into their plan for us as well as anything else security-wise that we may need. And then fencing will be six-foot slatted chain-link fence. So therefore, it will have a buffer between it to where you can't really see in. And then obviously, we'll have the setbacks and buffers per county regulations that will be adhered to, to accommodate landscaping, the distance off of property lines and everything like that. As far as fire is concerned, it is, like I said, it's dry storage. Those campers are meant to just sit there. So they shouldn't catch fire. And there's no saying that your house wouldn't catch fire and spread to our property as well. So we will have insurance obviously in place to try to protect that, and God forbid a fire happens. But we will have policies set in place for our customers to try to ensure every safety is taken for those RVs that are on our lot as well as the surrounding neighbors. And I think that's, did that answer everybody's questions that I could do?
Okay.
So applicant explicitly receives notice of the CCNRs through Treve Company LLC on July 13th. This notice was provided by Treve via the document delivery system Dropbox. Three of the company's members, Natalia Legal, Yigold, Mitch, Treve, and Bobby Matthews, all confirmed that provided notice of the CCNRs. Moreover, each has stated that they are willing to sign affidavits or if need be testify under oath with the penalty of perjury required by a court of law professing that they provide this.
I, I would like to see a signed document saying that because I, I do not have record of it.
All right.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
I allowed one, one more, and then that's it with the questions? Okay, we had the opportunity.
I heard, I heard something about septic. So are they talking about a septic?
No, there will be no septic or water.
Mentioned no septic.
There will be no septic and no water. This is a dry facility. They are strictly there to park and hook up and leave when they feel like. That, that is it.
That's what I wanted to find out, if we had to go through HHS and do some sort of permit for a septic field, but we don't.
So a six-foot fence on 14-foot-high RV.
All right. Okay, when were the covenants in place? Just answer the question. When were they in place?
I will. The covenants, the covenants were delivered to them as.
When were the covenants put on the properties?
They were placed on the property in 2007.
Okay, do we have record of that?
They were not recorded, but being recorded is not necessarily.
Sir.
Go ahead.
That's what I want to find out. Does the, does the county have record of covenants placed on that subdivision? Every subdivision, here's, here's the, the critical part of this. Every subdivision in this county has certain things placed on them. When, I'll take my subdivision as an example. Okay, I live at Estates at the Hidden Pines. It had covenants in 2005. Okay, the board dissolved, everybody else, the covenants, but the covenants are still there. But they were recorded.
Yes, this, this is a, I guess this is for the adjudication of, of the courts then at some point. They were not recorded. That was improper. Okay, but they, but there was disclosure of those covenants. So that, I guess that's for, for the, the courts to determine in the future.
Well, and that's something, I mean, if, if, if we had covenants and they were recorded, what's, they are in these properties, and we've gone through a lot of these things. We find this, and the covenants supersede everything that's going on. Because if you had covenants, you're exactly right. They limit anything you have. But right now, we don't have record of those covenants being recorded on this property, on this, this subdivision.
So to step in here real quick.
Please.
The, the crux of this situation is when those covenants were recorded.
Yes.
And they were recorded on October 27th of 2020, last year.
You can't do that. You can't come and record covenants after somebody's bought the property.
And that may be the crux for you folks, and I understand that. It will, we'll find out what the crux is for the judge and.
Well, and, and that's just the thing. So everybody, we're, we're not going to make any additional comments. No, Gary, I understand. For the rest of the room, for Zoom, we're not going to continue conversation about the specifics because that's the nuts and bolts. Because of when the covenants were recorded, those are the guidelines that the Planning Commission then uses to move forward in their decision. Yeah.
That's what we have to go by. That's what I see. And I'm looking at the date right here on the covenants.
I, I understand what you're saying.
And they're trying to answer those questions. And I wish, if there was anything, like on anything that shows the covenants in the starting of the subdivision. What?
Schedule B, Part Two of the Exceptions. On the title guarantee insurance, which you have in the packet, specifically draws out the Declaration of Protective Covenants, Conditioned Restrictions of Wind Spirit Ranches, recording, recorded October 27th. But they entered into a private deal on August 7th or whatever it was. But the covenants were given in the private deal. She had them well before the closing, recorded after. And it's, it's still legal, even though it wasn't recorded till October. It's legal when it was, the transaction went through.
And that's, that's not for us to decide here this evening. The Planning Commission has to use the dates that are recorded for Albert County, which is stamped at the, the top of our page. And outside of that, then it does become, as you are aware, a civil matter. And it becomes a totally separate conversation.
Look at them. I can't step in, into this and look at it with a legal opinion.
But you were also in the middle of COVID when your county wasn't even open. We couldn't, there was things I tried to file I couldn't do. There was nobody answered the phone. Nobody would answer emails. There was nobody even there. And I'm not, I don't, I've only met Gary not too long ago. But I'm saying with other stuff with the county, last year, in October, in January, in July, in June, July, August, when this closed in August, you couldn't get a hold of anybody at the county.
And, and that's a fair point.
And that is a good point.
However.
The thing is.
However.
I wish I could sit here and tell you to make the decision, but really, that has to have.
What the attorney said. They will sign the affidavits. They were delivered to the buyer, the buyer knew about them, and they entered into a private agreement knowing.
And folks, that's beyond our discussion.
And it is. Right here, I'm looking at, I hear that, and I hear this.
What I, what I would say is take everything else into consideration and see if you're going to impose this into a neighborhood. And, and, and the rest will be determined by other.
The rest will have to be determined by a legal process. Because, sir, we really.
If, if you approve this or move it forward, then it will be in that case.
Remember.
There's plenty, plenty to deny this regardless.
Okay, sir, if we approve this, all we're approving is that it moves forward to the board.
Oh, I understand. I get it.
So you folks.
I fully understand.
I don't know what's, how, how people will vote. And, sir, we've heard enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know how, how we'll all vote, okay? But you'll get the opportunity, when it goes before the board, to present the same things. Okay, so please, please take it forward. And hopefully, by that time, maybe we can have some legal opinion or legal expertise on the issue that we're facing.
So your lawyers can add to the packet before it goes to the commission?
Yes, yes. Jen, I did state appropriately, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any comment from any party can be sent in writing. Can't take phone calls. So via email, and that will be added to the project packet that will be viewed by the Board of County Commissioners. Yes.
Now, we've probably got questions up here.
My whole thing was the timing of when things were filed, when things were notarized. The title packet, though, contains the covenants that they were contained in, you know, those kinds of things. They were answering my questions.
So do you guys, who?
That was the only question I had.
That comes down to these covenants.
And it, yeah, it comes down to it, and it shows they were recorded afterwards.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
Do you have another, a question? What is your, your expected capacity of this RV storage lot? 30, 50, 60? What, what do you, what do you expect?
Around 150 campers.
That answer my question?
Okay, I do have some more. All right, you're bringing campers in, you're storing them. And we do have a lot of storage areas throughout this county. There's a lot.
We also.
And I mean, to, to state this, look how many have gone through this process and we've approved. So I mean, just to give you a point, all right? Here's what, there are many storage areas in this county. Okay, so. There are some, yes. And school domes. There's, and I won't go into details, I won't go into details. Just the parking area, what size are your sites? How much area space are you providing for each unit?
It will be 12-foot by 45-foot long.
And they're 12-foot wide?
12-foot wide by 45-foot.
Okay, and there's no septic system? There's no drain, no water?
We're literally doing a dry storage for people to have a place to park their campers.
Please.
So we understand, like, we see the growth that's coming around with the new subdivisions going in. Even my home has an RV garage attached to it, and it's not conducive to even trying to park an RV. So we know there is still the need, especially with the growth that is coming in. Hopefully, with the future plans of Delbert going through and things of that nature. Those, those, it's always going to be a need. And it's not necessarily just campers. It may be a boat. It may be an enclosed trailer. It won't just be RVs storage. We will cater to the RVs, but for the most part, if, if you can park it in that spot, you can park it there.
Now, security.
Security.
Okay, can you, can you go over what you're doing, how they enter, how they leave?
Security will be done with cameras at the front gate. There will be cameras posted on all corners. It will be surveillance 24 hours a day. on all corners, it will be surveillance twenty-four hours a day, and everything like that, so it will be lighted, and we will ensure, and if we have to, I, I misspoke, if, if we're, we are going to only try to allow RV trailers. I'm sorry, I, I apologize, I misspoke. No, I'm sorry.
You're gonna, you're gonna allow RV trailers, motorhomes, stuff like?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
And you're trying to keep that?
Yes.
What year?
Uh, anything older than ten years will be subject to review, so if you have a mint-conditioned vintage RV, as long as it, it is in working order, and all, they must all have current registration and everything like that, current insurance, to come on to our property.
Jen, this is not going, this is, this was excluded from the EDZ, correct?
That's correct, because originally when the EDZ was drawn, all residential was excluded.
Okay, now since it was excluded from the EDZ, this is the rezone part, do we have to go through an S U R?
No, it's a straight rezone, uh, so that we can do a site development plan.
But the site development plan is, is tied to the EDZ?
No.
No?
No, there's a.
This is for my clarity.
Sure. And per the land use table, there's S U R requirement, there's site development plan, and the, it calls for a site development plan.
Okay.
Yep, as long as the, as long as the zoning is appropriate.
All right. For some reason I thought there was, there was a required S U R.
No.
For a storage area, okay.
No.
That helped me.
And I, I do apologize that I misspoke, that we, we will, we will make sure that campers are strictly brought on to that land. I, I did misspeak, we had anticipated at some point to, my, my husband and I had discussed possibly having other things stored there, but if it's required that only boats and RVs are on that lot, then that's what we will do. We will adhere to any county guidelines that, and that, if that is under our conditions, then that is what we will do. I, I misspoke, I apologize.
The other thing, um, hours of operation?
Twenty-four seven, customers, customers are free to come and go as, as they please through, through there, but how many people do you know get up and come in there at midnight to hook up their campers?
I do.
I'm in the business.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, it is a twenty-four hour public, like, it's not public access, but.
That's good, that's good. All right.
Any other questions?
So, any other questions? Uh, who?
Dwayne Owens.
Oh, Dwayne, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Dwayne, thanks.
Is this when, is this when it's open for us to talk?
Yes.
Okay, thanks Danny. Uh, I, I had a, a couple of questions, one is on the fire mitigation onsite, is, uh, what's the plan for that? Does it, uh, do you have, uh, special fire extinguisher systems, you know, like their canisters that are able to put out RV fires, uh, are they, are they located, uh, in relatively short distances, uh, you know, in a kind of a grid? And, uh, um, my second question is related to lighting, um, are there, it looks like the lighting, uh, there's a number of poles, is there another alternative where you could have less lighting poles and maybe use infrared or something like that for, um, minimizing light pollution?
So to answer your. So to answer your fire question, the fire department has reviewed this, and, and due to the, they, all they asked were the obstruction of, of the access, and we, we have fixed that to accommodate them, and as far as the lighting, the light specs that I was given are the ones that were recommended for this type of facility, um, I do not have exact specs on them as far as they are LEDs, and they are designed to only show or light where they are intended, they are not meant to be extreme.
Dwayne, you got any more? Who else we got, Dan?
Dan has questions. I never have questions. But, but the question is directed at the, uh, the shorts, uh, the first question I'd like to ask is, have you run this kind of business before?
We have not, we are a young couple, we have been researching it for quite a number of years, we have looked into it, we've actually looked into purchasing an RV, an actual RV park, and, um, also small storage facilities, but we have excellent, um, I guess, um, help to, to answer any questions that we may have, um, as far as referencing those things, um, but we are in a position where we believe that we can run this effectively, efficiently, and bring something to the community, whether, depending on how that works.
So, my second question is in regards to, uh, do you carry insurance yourself to protect the other people should an incident occur at your facility? For example, uh, I did not hear your answer very well, because you're a little far from the mic about fire, but let's say perchance is something happened, and, uh, the person that, say, catches fire, and I am, uh, speaking, uh, damages other people here, uh, do you have insurance?
Yes, the facility will have insurance tailored to this type of facility, um, that covers the campers onsite as well as us, and then on top of it, our customers are going to be required to have current insurance on their vehicles or their campers that are on our lot, and they have to provide proof of insurance to us.
The other, the other, the other comment that I have is the size of the parking spaces. I myself have a fifth wheel that's thirty feet long, and, uh, backing it in with two feet clearance on either side can be a challenge at times. So, I kind of look at your spots as possibly, uh, if, if somebody in a professional sense who's very familiar with this type of operation, did they design the angles and spots, and not just for the density, but practicality of making a turn with a large RV?
Yes, sir, we took that into account, most RV lots do have only twelve feet, what that does is it kind of deters people from trying to live in them, it keeps them from ha, trying to put their slides, they can put their slides out enough to load and unload and get in safely, but it deters them from being able to keep, keep them out in case somebody decides, oh, I'll just sleep here, is why we have done that. They have been looked at, my husband and I actually have lived in an RV for the last two and a half years, and we have a forty-four foot, so we understand how their turning radius works, and a lot of those spaces will be pull-through to where they can, they can come through, and it would be easier on them.
As far as safety is concerned, is there anybody that will be at or on the lot for hours of operation? I heard twenty-four seven availability earlier, I wanted to confirm that because you're a little far from the microphone, how it's sounding, but, uh, so, do people be able to enter and exit twenty-four seven?
Yes, my husband and I will be onsite throughout the day, but at night, um, we have contemplated one of us staying there overnight, but at, as security, but at this point, we will not be doing that, it will only be throughout the day, my husband and I will be there, those customers will have a specific gate goat, we will know exactly who is going in and out, whose code is being used, how frequently it be, is being used, and we will also have that system, um, wired to our home to where we can see exactly what is going on at any point in time. There will be an alarm system to where if something is not right, it will alert us. Throughout the day, we will be doing space checks, we will be, if there's something that needs to be addressed, we will address it.
Okay, they, when you said something that you, that will alert us, uh, I am, uh, my next question was going to be, are you going to have video surveillance and a no alarm system should something happen when you are not there, uh, that would be monitored by a professional agency so that the fire department or others or the, or the police or somebody could be notified, uh, so as to have security here?
Yes, sir, there will be that put in place, and it was, it will be part of the software for the RV, the RV storage facility.
Okay, well, that answers all my questions, but I would like to make a comment to the chair. Uh, Danny, um, I just want to make it clear that I heard you talking about the covenants, and I heard the discussion, and I just want to make a comment, the covenants are a civil matter.
Yes.
And, uh, if a person needs to seek relief, it's through the civil courts, Albert County does not enforce covenants. Albert County, um, this is a civil matter, and I just wanted to emphasize that. So I'm done, Danny.
Can I just make one more comment?
Go ahead.
I just want you guys to know that I don't want you to take us on as, as liars or that we're misleading you, we will do whatever it takes to make sure that this is per county regulations and that we follow what they require of us.
Well, you just heard from him, it's a private matter.
That's, I, I'm not addressing, I'm, I'm not addressing the covenants, I'm saying in the whole, the whole spiel, so, the whole thing.
This, this conver, here, these conversations here, okay, folks, this is not the place to have these conversations, all right? So if we could. All right, so we're at a point. Any more questions?
Here's a quick question, uh, insurance coverage, uh, have you, what type of environmental protection would you specifically propose?
That's, sir.
Discussion is closed.
That's, you need to request that, I think, in acts, I think it was covered. So.
Hey Danny, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead, Dwayne.
Uh, uh, yes, this is Dwayne Owens, uh, with respects to just, uh, hearing that the CCNRs are, are a civil matter, what is the liability or obligation to the county for, uh, approving a rezone that might have what I would call some sort of an encumbrance on it? Is that, is that still an encumbrance in the county's eyes?
You know, here's, and Jen, maybe you can help, if we're aware of covenants, and we read the covenants, covenants supersede county code, okay? Then they run with the land, so that's, and we read that, so really, it should, we can't ultimately, if we know that they're going against the covenants, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't enforce, enforce our code over the covenants. Okay, and I know what Dan said, but literally, there is a time, and it's not enforcing it, the covenants, we're not actually, we wouldn't be enforcing them, we would be acknowledging them and accepting them. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And I agree with that, Danny.
Okay, just to be.
If we recognize that they are, exist and are binding as far as the county is concerned, then we live within those.
Then we live within those.
Right.
Danny, those were written in 2007.
Okay. Yes, and that is the question that I'm dealing with, is they were written. But they're, but they weren't recorded. And that's where I, no, sir, we're done. No, but. We do, and it's some, I'm not going to decide. Yeah, okay.
I have a question, in, in the packet, it does have a, uh, title commitment dated March 31st, 2020, why would that be record, why would this title commitment be months after the purchase?
And, maybe that's a, that's a good question, go ahead.
Hey, Tom, can you use the mic, please?
Stand up, Tom, please.
Tom Maroney, P O Box 902, Elizabeth, Colorado. There's two points that I need to make, one, those covenants were not recorded when they purchased the property, uh, they have to be recorded. The, uh, would you just give me your question one more time again?
The question is of a title commitment, uh.
Oh, okay, yeah, the title commitment, when they, when, when, when we, when anybody has to do a land use application, part of that land use application, this is long after they closed on the property, one of the requirements is number seven or eight or nine or something like that, they have to give a title commitment to the county, so the county know, knows who owns the property, and if it's encumbered against, if there's any loans on it, but that's what they needed.
They just pulled, or they did a repull and pulled new title.
That's, that's, it's called an informational commitment, okay? And that, we do that on every land use application, it's required, and it's long after the closing.
We're gonna, what we're gonna do is ma, have a motion, then we'll vote, and we'll go down through the, through the line.
I'll make a motion to approve branding iron, R Z dash twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-four-one, rezone of the five acre parcel, resident twelve acre, one, to industrial, subject to the following conditions. The following three conditions.
Okay, got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now let's go around the table and do a vote, and start, Dan?
Yes, I, I vote for it.
Okay, okay. Those we have up there, Dwayne?
Yes, I vote for it with those, uh, conditions.
Okay. I'm opposed.
Yes.
You're gonna vote to what? To approve, eh, Van, when did you get on, I need to.
I, I got on, uh, when this started, so.
Okay, so you've got to hear all, the presentation and go through everything, I just gotta be sure. Okay, um, we need to adjust the thing, because the, the roster, the roll call to show Van was.
Here the whole time?
Well, can you give us a time when you, you started?
We had him on originally.
We had him on, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Great, it's good, I.
Probably around seven-thirty, yeah.
Okay, my mistake.
Okay.
Okay, so. Okay, you voted?
Aye.
Oppose?
Opposed.
Vote yes. You got them all?
Except for you.
I vote yes.
Yes, okay. So we're going to go through them one more time. We have Mike as, Mike as nay, Danny aye, Jason nay, Roger is not in attendance, Peter aye, John nay, Dan aye, Van aye, and Dwayne aye. Is that correct?
I think you got them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, folks, please, all this means is we're kind of, we're kind of mixed on this. It'll go to the board with that vote.
The final tally is five to three, four.
Okay.
Five to three, four, the proposal.
Okay, now. Go to the board, go to the meeting, clear up the legal. Okay?
Thank you, that's important for me.
Yeah, clear that up. And that is, okay, because that really is a critical point. It is. I understand. That's the, the, okay. Folks, thanks for participating and giving me input.
Gary, how much money?
I've got enough.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. I brought this on, I'll take.
You did a good job. You did a good job. No, just, the only thing is, your vote is not going to write up until you vote, okay? So, you know.
No, now you turned it on.
You have the opportunity, if you wanted to say something like this, you could, you should have said that in a public sound. Shouldn't go, you know, and you showed it to me and you showed it to me. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks. Good, good, how are you doing? I know. Yes, you told me what you did. You bought some friggin' property and, and you turned it into a.
I bought thirty-five acres, non-county.
I know. You brought that, yeah.
Tommy Thrash was proud of it.
But then you sold it, right? You bought it and sold it, yeah, you still own it?
No, what I did, I sold my position, paid off all my debt. So now when I shoot craft and I see those walls, I'm like, I'm just taking this all in to build a road.
Yeah? Yeah, well, you gotta build the road. You know.
Just to reemphasize for those of you on Zoom, in case you didn't hear, we are going to take a brief recess. Can I, yep, propose we start up again? So yeah, if you can turn all your mics back on. Everybody on Zoom, we're back up and running. I'm going to hand this over to Matt.
All right, good evening all. As you may have heard, my name is Matt. I am arguably the newest planner within Albert County. And after two months, I finally get the opportunity to meet you all, so I extend my introduction to you. Today, I'm bringing Prairie Ranch Development Guide Amendment DG 210026 to you, formerly known as Diamond Ridge. And this is a request for the amendment to the existing development guide for the Diamond Ridge planned unit development, a density reduction from 27 lots to four lots of 10-plus acres each. The landowner in this case is Green Tree Land Co. LLC, and the applicant or representative is Tom Maroney. The property size is 51.2 acres at a location just east of County Road 13 along County Road 150. There is a concurrent application with this as well for a minor plat, which will be reviewed administratively. There was no public comment. Excuse me? Still muted.
Are you not hearing, Dwayne? Dwayne, are you not hearing?
Are we better now? How about that?
Dwayne, can you hear?
I can hear.
Dan, can you hear?
I, it just got turned on, it's been dead quiet.
Okay, all right, we missed a part, okay.
Shall we resume?
Please.
Or start over? Rewind.
Actually, start over, please.
Perfect. All right. To sum up, we are reviewing Prairie Ranch, which was formerly known as Diamond Ridge. This is a development guide amendment, code DG 210026. This is an amendment to the existing development guide for the Diamond Ridge planned unit development with a density reduction from 27 lots to four lots of 10-plus acres each. The landowner in this case is Green Tree Land Co. LLC, and the applicant is Tom Maroney. The size of the property in question is 51.2 acres and is located about a quarter mile east of County Road 13 along County Road 150. This is concurrently going through with minor plat, ID MP 210027 for the associated project. There were also no public comments received for this application. In general, there was a pre-application meeting held on January 7th of this year with an application submitted on June 2nd of this year. The referral period commenced immediately.
Is the presentation available to put on your screen? I still have the previous one from Jennifer. So I do not have in front of me any of the current one you're talking about.
Okay, hang on just a second, everybody on Zoom. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and then reshare. And Dan, you let us know what comes across.
Okay, we're seeing it from the screen now.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
If this occurs again, please speak up so I can address it immediately.
You know what we'll do? We should have checked before we got started. That's my job, okay? See, I can be sure everybody can see and everybody can share the screen.
Got it.
Save you time, so, sorry. There's a lot of reviews to another's way to make this show full screen.
That's what I was doing before, and for some reason it didn't translate.
Well, it showed little screen there, but it showed full screen here.
Correct.
And I know there's a way to do it.
There is, and that button should do it. Yeah, so we'll, we'll muddle through, and thank you all for bearing with us. We're actually going to switch up the whole process here in the next little while. So more to come. I'm gonna let Matt continue on.
All right, to resume, the pre-application meeting was held on January 7th of 2021. The application was submitted on June 2nd of 2021, with the first referral period commencing immediately on June 2nd and lasting until June 22nd of 2021. And the PC hearing dates, which you may be aware of, were continued from the September 21st meeting and will be continued as well for the BOCC meeting as well. Here is a rough representation of the zoning and the surrounds of the property. Note to the north and the east, we do have a lot of agricultural zones, mostly used for grazing, whereas to the south and to the west, beyond what is seen in the zoning map, is primarily planned unit development and suburban-type development. As reiterated here as well, this site is 51 acres of undeveloped grazing land. There are no floodplains or wetlands in the area. Water is not a concern, and there is no trees or vegetation on this property. As for the development guide amendment details, this is from the exhibit itself. Primarily, what needs to be known are three things between the lot standards, the utilities, and open space. I will have the applicant speak to the open space portion, but what is seen here is that the lot standards will be changed to allow for this smaller density, as well as the utilities adjusting so that individual wells and septic systems will be allowed, whereas they were previously restricted with the previous guide. For the referral process, these five agencies and county departments responded. Public Works did not have any comments. The assessor's office and GIS requested that metro districts are dissolved. A road name is developed, open space is dedicated, and there are tracks defined. Elizabeth Fire did not have comments, but have their comments noted within the minor plat application that will be reviewed by staff. COR, formerly IREA, approves of the application, and the Colorado Department of Water Resources needed additional info, but water supply has been determined since the time of application. So for the review criteria, because this is a development guide that pertains to a planned unit development, the planned unit development review criteria, 1 through 6, will be considered in this situation. Whether the proposed rezoning conforms to and is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Albert County Comprehensive Plan, we noted that the comprehensive plan is supported by a number of the goals and policies that are outlined within the staff report. Whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses, the surrounding land uses in the area are a mixture of agriculture and single-family residential lots. Lot sizes of the single-family residential lots in the area vary greatly. Lots that are adjacent to this property to the west range from 5 to 6 and 1/2 acre lots. That are adjacent to this property to the south range from 2 to 3 acres. It should be noted that there are much larger lots in the area as well, including the property that surround this one to the north and the west. Whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provision of public services, we found that the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact these provisions of public services, and there are no objections received to the contrary from the referral agencies we sought. Whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment, the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the environment. The proposal will ultimately create four new residential lots with open space. Whether the proposed rezoning would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system without improvements, the proposed rezoning will not create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. The original development guide allowed for up to 27 single-family residential lots, which would have been created, or which would have created an impact and required some public improvements. The proposed amendment significantly reduced the density and the anticipated impact upon the road system. Whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Albert County, the proposed rezoning will not be detrimental to any of these health, safety, or welfare of the present or future residents of Albert County. So with this, in consideration of the criteria set forth in the Albert County zoning regulations, and as we understand it, that there are no objections from other governing bodies, the recommendation of the Community and Development Services Department is that the planning commission recommend approval of the requested Prairie Ranch, formerly Diamond Ridge, DG 210026 development guide amendment, subject to the following conditions. The applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision by the BOCC. The development guide amendment shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the development guide exhibit is recorded. Recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within 180 days of the BOCC approval. And that concludes this presentation.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Matt. It's about Tom Maroni, you're about time to, what you call it. I think it's pretty straightforward. This property is already some, and so this is not a rezon. It's just the development guide, you know, they changed it up to 27 lots, which would eventually have been, uh, 54 lots if they would have developed further. 2018? That all went up, so it's been a long time since.
We started, I'm sorry. Should I start over again? Like I said, we started this back in 2005, 2006. The applicant or the owner actually has paid upwards to already $80,000 to $85,000 in impact fees that were imposed at that point in time. And so we'll figure out what we're gonna do with that when it comes to the board. We, the three things we changed is that it went from central water and central sewer to well and septic. Our water supply has been approved, approved by the state. So we reduced the density down to four, 10-plus acre lots, and we have a little over 20% open space. That's the Italian in me. But that, so we've got 20% open space, which we can do by amending the PUD guide. So we've got open spaces surrounds the entire property. It equals over 20%, which is one of the requirements for the county. It's not typical in this type of situation because this is not a rezon, so it's just a change of the development guide to allow for that type of use, lowering the densities. That's pretty much it. Peter? Any questions?
How about there, Dwayne?
Hey, I was, thanks Danny. I was noticing on the map there on County Road 150, is the square box the perimeter of the property? Or is it, is it just an indicator of where the approximate boundary is?
That, that vicinity map is accurate as to the actual property line on the 50-plus acres.
Okay, it just looks like it's cutting off the corner of the property that goes down to Road 13.
Our property does not touch County Road 13. It's approximately a quarter.
I'm sorry, it's the, there's a property line up on 150 that, there's a fence line that goes down to the property that borders Road 13. So it looks like the square is cutting through their property. That's all I was saying.
It's not, and with this property, my applicant or my, my owner actually owns to the middle of County Road 150. So those are all, those are all easements. Most of them are prescriptive by right.
Am I making sense?
Yes.
Am I making sense, Danny?
Yes, I see what you're saying. Yes. I think Tom explained it. I think you, you kind of explained it when you talked about the easements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dwayne.
Okay. I'm slow, so.
No. No, good question, Dwayne. All right, Dan?
No questions, pretty straightforward.
Can we, wait, is this being recorded? Did he actually say that? I'm kidding with you, Dan.
Okay. If we have no questions, this is, this is pretty straightforward.
I think it's too good. I think it's too good.
Well.
I think he ought to make at least 10 out of it, not just 4.
Do I have to deal with this? I will.
All right.
I would make a motion to approve this D-zone, or I guess amendment to the, to the zone, to the design guide with the three conditions.
Okay, any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ladies and gentlemen?
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No, thanks for doing this, because it's not fun.
I just wanted to say thank you all for attending. Everybody on Zoom, you are free to head to bed, and we will talk to you all soon.
Thanks Jen for hosting.
Absolutely, we'll see y'all soon.
Okay, have a good evening.
You guys got any questions? Let's stop this.